All right, I am Joe Osham. I am the advocacy chair for the Northwest IC Council PTAs. I am a parent of a student in the district and I also, my spouse is a teacher in the district too. She was a PTA involved before I got involved, before she became a teacher. And now she's a teacher and I've kind of taken over some of the role of being involved on the PTA side and really enjoy our schools and our communities. And I want to thank everyone who's watching this. We are going to be doing our 2021 candidate forum for Northwest ISD Board of Trustees Place Two. And we are joined with Mr. Mark Schluter. Mark, please say hello real quick. And Mr. Kevin Lebanic, please say hello.
Hello.
All right, so y'all, we will, this will last hopefully about 90 minutes, right on the dot, if not a little quicker, depending how we go. The way that this format is, I will ask, we will flip a coin. And the first person, the person that wins the toss will go first. And I will ask a question of that person and then the next person will get a chance to respond. And then the initial person that was asked will get a chance to do a rebuttal if they choose. You can pass on your rebuttal, things will go faster if we do that. And then for the next question, it will alternate who goes first. So I have a, I'm prior military. Challenge coins are a victim in the military, but with, if you ever see them, they can be really large. This one is actually a Texas Rangers challenge coin. I hope you could see the Texas Rangers logo. And then on the other side is actually a silhouette of a soldier. So I will be respectful to my, to our Mr. Schluter, who's been in the district for a long time. Which side would you like to choose, Mr. Schluter?
Hands please, or the Texas Ranger.
With the Texas Rangers, okay, all right. Cause my desk, I'm gonna do like a big flip to, so please trust me on this, all right? It's gonna look weird with like the camera effect and everything I've got going on. Tails wins, so it's the shadow. So we will start with Mr. Lebanic. Alrighty, question number one. So before I start, also, I just want to state that these questions, I had gave opportunity to all of our PTAs to submit questions that they wanted to, in the same with the district helped send that out also for, to see if any staffers wanted to submit any questions to. So these questions are a combination of what has been submitted to me by a variety of folks. And then I kind of changed, you know, made, made it work for our format. So the first question, we're gonna start hard right out of the gate. One of the big things going on right now that we have is the bond for the school district. I'm not gonna ask you if you're, any, either one of you are for or against the bond, but can you just talk about what will happen if the bond? Or can you talk about the importance of the bond and what happens with the outcomes of the bond? Both outcomes. Mr. Lebanic, you first.
Well, there's four bonds. Certainly the first one, as I understand it, you know, is for the growth, buildings, infrastructure, as far as upgrades, those types of things. Just certainly important there. The middle two start to get into more little specifics as far as athletics and tennis courts and those kinds of things, upgrades to football stadiums. And then, then D being for technology, which would then, of course, or again, as I understand it, a company's, a company's effect will go with all the students and as well as the new growth is kind of as part of that. I think A and D certainly affect all of the students in the entire district. So the importance there is, is across the board. I think we do have growth if we want it or not. If it's a good thing or bad thing, depending how you look at it, it is, it has been here and it is continuing to come. And we need to address it. Is it with the bonds or is it in a regular budget program or a combination of both? I just think for me, the better and the more effective we can communicate exactly what we need and then be good stewards of that money is the importance.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schluter, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, sir, I'm good. I believe your question was, what happens if the bond doesn't pass? We've had lots of discussions on that. I've been in the district for quite a while. We've been there when there were good times. We've been there when there were bad times. So as Kevin mentioned, we've got the four propositions. The most important one is A, of course, they're all important or wouldn't put them on the agenda to be voted for. You know, B, it's the stadium renovations, which people think, why do we need stadium renovations? The old Texans stadium that I played in, it's got a lot of wear on it. Our middle schools play there, some of our P W teams play there. So it's very important that we keep those up. C, middle school recreational facilities, and I'm sure you've heard Dr. Warren's bond talks. Where we've talked about some areas that don't have the tennis courts or facilities that other middle schools might have. And then of course, D is technology, as Kevin mentioned, and our kids have one-to-one devices and it's very important that we keep that up because a lot of our lessons plans are on those devices. So the question that I want to answer is, what do we do if the bond doesn't pass? So unfortunately, the first thing we have to do is assess which schools are already at capacity, which we know some schools are already over capacity by 100 students. So we already look at portable buildings. That's one of the first things that we do is bring in portable buildings because as we know, our bond, our tax rate, there are two things, the M and O maintenance operations, which pays for our teacher salaries, our electricity bill, and then the INS which pays back the bonds. So the INS is what we've been saying that will not be impacted by the bond. So I just wanted to bring that up. So other things we look at are our programs, programs that maybe our students, a few of our students are part of, that we may look at, well, how do we, how do we cut some of those? And one of the things we always look at, our kids come first. So anything that we do to have to cut the budget to accommodate all of the 1,100 plus students that come in every year, we have to evaluate that. That's a nice buzzer there, Joe.
I know, it's a little loud, I apologize, but to show I am keeping kind. I thought I actually silenced my phone, so I'd actually see it when it is. I didn't expect to hear it, so I apologize for so. All right, Mr. Lebanic, Lebanic, your response, you have 30 seconds to add anything extra if you'd like.
Well, I think if they don't pass, then we certainly, I mean, we're just gonna have to prioritize it. I think like Mark had said, we're gonna have to address what is a need and what is a nice to have and then kind of go from there and just kind of get old school budgeting, I guess, a little bit and see if we can't get Dame, Dave Ramsey involved.
All right, so I'm gonna throw a little curveball to both of you then. If it doesn't pass, let's say. But with the actual projected growth that, that the district or that the demographer has said in the past, you know, whether it be the traditional 1,100 students every year or up to possibly 1,600 next year because of all the K and pre-K kids coming in, parents sell their kids out from kindergarten. And so, you know, you'll have quite a few kids possibly coming in. And what is the, what, how would you respond to parents who are concerned about temporary buildings and/or increased boundary changes? Each of you, a quick 30 seconds. Mark, can you go first on that?
Sure. Well, battery changes really are always difficult for us. Every time we open a new school, you know, we've got Berkshire that's opening up soon. So we'll have some capacity there. The south end of the district is just growing like crazy. So what do you do as far as boundary changes? Well, we have to do what we think is right to be able to give the kids enough space to be able to learn. That's number one. We always look at safety and security in our buildings. So if they're outside and they have to make a trip from one to another, we've been in that situation in the past, is that we have to provide that shelter in order for them to get out there and make sure they're safe and secure.
Right, thank you. Mr. Lebanic, 30 seconds, please.
Yeah, I think we just, if the bonds fail, then it means the voters voted them down. So we need to have those conversations and trying to figure out going, okay, what are the expectations? You know, if, if we don't want the bonds to be approved, then what are we, what is our community expecting? You know, are we gonna, as parents, gonna be okay with, like Mark said, having to set up portable buildings and those types of things? Cause that's, you know, those are the realities and if that's where the community's at, that's where the community's at. But I think just having actual conversations and, and some of them are gonna be hard.
All right, thank you. And I will admit, I made a mistake. I actually started asking questions before allowing you guys to introduce yourselves. So I own up to my mistakes, so I would like to do that first, a little, little, like I said, this is a little bit like speed dating. I just kind of got right in here and went right at it, so I apologize. So Mr. Lebanic, you have two minutes to introduce yourselves to our audience, please.
Okay, well, my name's Kevin Lebanic. I'm a parent, four kids, two high schoolers, a middle schooler, and one that's gonna be in kindergarten next fall. You know, I'm not an educator, not an administrator, I'm just a dad. That's why I decided to run. You know, I felt like the district, on the school board particularly, just needed new ideas, not that the people on there are bad ideas or anything like that. I just think the community's changed dramatically and I think just needs a voice of a parent that has to get up and get the four kids to school and different schools and worries about zoning because he's already driving enough or his wife and him are trying to play paper boxes, who taking who kind of thing. And so I ran or decided to run to just be that voice for the parents and to bring new and different ideas to the school board.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schluter, two minutes to introduce yourselves, please, to our audience.
Thank you, Joe. My name is Mark Schluter and I live on the west side of the district. I live on the family farm that I grew up and was raised on. I went to Northwest Schools from first grade all the way to 12th. That was before there was kindergarten. My father, I don't know if that was good or bad, was a teacher at Northwest High School. He was my algebra and physics teacher, so he made it really hard on me to learn how to study. And a lot of fantastic teachers that directed me along the way and encouraged me. And I've always been so excited to be able to give back. I've had two kids go through Northwest Schools from first all the way through graduation. They've had kids. I currently have a grandson that is at Northwest High School this year, so I'm pretty excited about following his path all the way through. I've been very fortunate to have been in all of the schools and just see the enthusiastic teachers, which somebody asked, well, why do you run for school board? And if you ever go into a classroom and see the interaction between a teacher and a student and seeing a student, just get it. That brings a tear to my eye, brings a joy to my heart. So that's one of the primary reasons is to bring innovation as a civil engineer. I think everything needs to be upgraded and looked at. Don't look at the past. In other words, to set the stone and move forward, but always look for how can we improve and what can we do better? So I think that's a district of innovation is Northwest ISD.
Good deal. Thank you very much. So now we'll go back to the questions. So I apologize for that little change drill there. All right. The next question, it'll be for Mr. Schluter first. When, in what ways would you like to see PTA support and engage in the district's vision and goals?
Well, I know that PTAs have always been very supportive of our schools and we've had many times when the PTA president has been and made presentations to the board and encouraged the board to be a part of the PTA. In fact, when I first started being interactive in our kids' middle school, it was in PTA events. I was very involved in PTA. And they encouraged me to run and it's like, okay, now I like helping people. I love kids. It was a good combination. So I think a lot of times when we go out to our public forums, that PTAs need to be forefront in that because they represent our teachers, they represent our students, and they represent our parents. Three very important components to how we deliver a message of education to our kids. So you guys are a voice, voice at ground level, and we like to hear that in order to move forward with our curriculum and decisions we make.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Lebanic. In what ways would you like to see PTA support and engage in the district's vision and goals?
I think some of it, I'll agree that I think the PTA has a huge opportunity. Or more so the district, I guess, the school board has a huge opportunity to use the PTA to be that gap. I do think there has been a breakdown, I don't say breakdown, but just a lacking of communication a little bit, and the PTA certainly has the ability to help bridge that district and district plans and what's going on, kind of big picture, to frontlines, so to speak, what's happening in the classrooms and with those parents and to help communicate, hey, this is what we need, but this is why we're making these decisions. And also to help bring those parents and the staff and teachers' questions to the board in a, in a positive way where we can all have kind of conversations to understand and come up with good solutions for challenges facing us.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schluter, would you like to add anything else?
Yeah, I will. I definitely appreciate the PTA and their support in the bond committee. They have been one of our biggest advocates about getting information out in every avenue, on our Twitters or Facebooks, or now every avenue that we have to communicate, the PTA has been right there to lead that cheer. So we definitely appreciate them.
Thank you. All right. We actually have a council meeting next week and we will be voting to see, there's a process that we have to take as a 5-0 win C3 ourselves, each of our local PTAs to support a resolution to support the bond. So we can publicly state if, if the PTA councils, the PTAs wants to support the bond. And so we have that election coming up next week. So hopefully we'll be able to honk our horn and support the bond. If not, then oh my God, there we go, I went on myself also. We'll, we'll see how that turns out though. So thank you for answering that. All right. The next question will be for Mr. Lebanic. What does inclusion for students with disabilities look like for you?
I think, I mean, it's important. And I think for our, I mean, as we're talking about building things and building new schools and upgrading schools, I think making them to where those students can, can participate as much as possible in just the regular classes or the regular activities of a school and kind of creating that sense of just being part of their school or their grade level and those things is huge. And I think from, from a mental health standpoint and just from a community standpoint, that is, that is very important. And I think when we do assess things, those, those parameters should be always considered, continue to be.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schluter, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, I will say when we first hired Dr. Warren, that was one of the first things that he brought up was, was special needs kids. That was one of his, his special things. So we have embraced that very heavily since he got here. In fact, as we look at special needs and the importance of that face-to-face learning, when we started the school year and we started virtually. And one of the important things we looked at was, hey, these kids need to see a teacher. They need to see somebody face-to-face. So we made special provisions for those kids to be able to get in to our classrooms, to talk to their teachers face-to-face. Just be edified by the opportunity to be encouraged by their teachers. So I can say, we as a district have made special efforts to do that, to include them, as Mr. Lebanic said, that we make them feel part of the school community and not, not something that should be separated from the rest of the pack.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lebanic, you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, I mean, well, yeah, I think, I think it's important and I agree. And I think Mr. Schluter had said, I think that the COVID and some of those, those challenges are huge factors, I think, even with the masks and some of that stuff that we need to be aware of and how they affect all of our students.
All right, thank you. All right. The next question then will be for Mr. Schluter. When you look at the district's visions and goals, is there anything you would like to add or change? Being that if we gave you a magic wand.
Well, that's a good question. In fact, I think we've had these goals for around a while and we are scheduled this year to take a look at those and reevaluate them. Now, obviously, the first one, kids come first, is the most important one and should never be neglected or changed. We have always striven to be the best and most sought-after school district in the state. And we are a recognized school district, not only by the state, but if you look at the influx of people that come into a district, they recognize the excellence and we have high expectations for our students and unfortunately, we've put a lot of pressure on our teachers to meet those expectations. So as far as goals go, I think we, we have a goal to excel even more, provide more opportunities as our budget sees fit. We have six fantastic academies and we have, have great discussions about additional academies. Of course, they take money. So what programs can we provide to our kids and what resources can we give them to help them succeed beyond this life? We say college, career, military, and life ready. Now, we mean that in everything we do as far as how we set goals. So I could say one thing, it would be to raise the expectations and opportunities for kids.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lebanic, I will ask the question for you also. In what ways would you like to see, oh, sorry, I screwed that one up. When you look at the district's vision and goals, is there anything you would like to add or change?
I mean, I agree with Mark. I mean, the kids come first should, should always be the top. I mean, that's the job of a school. I would, would like to see, you know, maybe a little more financial stability. I mean, I think we, obviously, we have budget concerns where we have some programs and stuff we had to tweak. I think of growth in our district. You know, I'd like to be seeing us adding programs and not stepping back. And I understand it takes money and we do have to kind of get in there, but I think that goes back to communicating with the family. You know, as, as a parent, I want my kids to have every opportunity they possibly can to do whatever it is that they want. And I know that's not all realistic, but I do think the financial and the budget, you know, for lack of a better term, balancing is, is, it should be a huge goal. So we can then add all those other programs. And I would like to see us to work maybe more with, and we do it now, but work more with like trades. You know, not every kid's going to college and we, like, those industries need people. Can we set up internships for some of our high schools? And see if those things, and just kind of work on that, where to give more opportunities for everybody and be more of a partner with the community.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schluter, 30 seconds, if you'd like to add anything else?
I don't know, but I've got a whole lot more. We do have some good technical programs too. In fact, I've hired one of our kids from Eaton High School come out and practice his welding skills at my farm and he's done an amazing job. So I love seeing the kids excel, not just in the academics, but in the technical aspects as well.
All right. The next question, Mr. Lebanic. What do you see as the biggest challenge that the district faces going into the 2021, 2022 school year?
I think the biggest challenge, one way or the other, is gonna be just finances in general. I mean, we have growth that's coming and that's gonna require finances if the bonds pass or if they don't. I mean, we're gonna have to get creative and make sure that, that every dollar and every, every avenue and every purchase is, is being good stewards of the money that taxpayers are giving us and also helping the most students across the entire district.
All right. Mr. Schluter, what do you see as the biggest challenges, biggest challenge the district faces going into the 2021, 2022 school year?
Now, budget is definitely high up on the list, but, but I've kind of written safety because I want COVID to be over and I want our kids to be able to come back and want them to be in the classroom without their mask, but I want everybody to be there safe and secure. The second one that I had is, is security. And we put a lot of money in previous bonds and in this current bond to secure our students so that they can be safe from the crazy environment that we live in. I will mention a few things about the budget and this came out in some of the bond talks. In 2016, 2017, we gained $10 million in additional funds from the state. 2017, 2018, we gained another $17 million additional from the state. 2018, 2019, $22 million more from the state. They instituted House Bill Number Three and we received $1 million more than we had the previous year. So you can see that we were in the 10, 17, $22 million for the growth that we had and all of a sudden, we were cut to $1 million. So in the next year, we're looking to gain $6 million. And the years following that, we're projecting $9 million more from the state based on the current legislation. So if you look at $6 million a year for annual staffing growth, $2 million a year for a recapture, that's our Chapter 49 that has to go back to state because we're a rich school district, $4 million for 2% staff raises every year, we're at $12 million. And even if we got to the nine, what are we gonna do? We've got $3 million short. So we're working with our legislators right now to do a cleanup bill with House Bill Three and hopefully restore some of these budgets back to our school district so we can go and get back to business as usual.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lebanic, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I think Mark had touched on it. I mean, I think for next fall, I mean, the masks, unless something dramatically changes, that's in my opinion, should be a non-issue. I think we should be, we should be letting our kids not, or leaving the parents up to decide if they want their kids to wear masks. And that's certainly, certainly a hot button right now. Hopefully it's a non-factor by then.
All right. All right, sorry, I thought I had something else. All right. The next question then will be for Mr. Schluter. As a trustee, what is the most important attribute that you bring to the table?
Well, hopefully I bring more than one, but I would thank listening. I've been married for 40, 48 years to my high school sweetheart. So I think I perfected the listening part. And so listening to everyone, and it's hard because everybody has a different perspective about what we should be doing. So I'm very active in the school board. So if you've ever listened to a school board meeting, I usually have a lot to say. Sometimes the board doesn't like hearing it. Sometimes we agree on a lot of things, sometimes we don't. But as a board, we make our decisions, not as individuals. So if any of us have an individual subject that we are worried about, you know, in the end, we always agree with the other board members in the vote. We shake our hands and move on. So I think my most enduring quality is my listening ability and I just love working with people. Our staff is fantastic. Our principals are fantastic. And just to be around them, you're uplifted by the opportunity to gain knowledge from, from what they have gained.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lebanic, as a trustee, what is the most important attribute that you will bring to the table, sir?
I think it's just as a parent, parent right now, I've been two 14-year-old girls in a house, a five-year-old girl and a son squeezed in the middle, trying to balance all of that. You learn a lot and, and some of it, some of it is listening, some of it's communicating, some of it's making tough decisions and going, hey, this is what we're have to do and communicating those out. And I think that, as a parent, that's the quality or the attribute that I think I can most bring.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schluter, anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, it's interesting because we encourage our kids to be lifelong learners. It's the same for board members. You know, we have Yeah, it's interesting because we encourage our kids to be lifelong learners. It's the same for board members, you know, we have continuous training that we do. A lot of our board agendas could be up to fifteen hundred pages long. So it's our responsibility to read those board agendas in minutes and, uh, the information that staff has accumulated for us to be able to make those decisions, uh, for our kiddos.
Alright. I am a, I'm currently working on my masters right now, so I'm in the forever learner program myself in a way. I was kind of believing in it. But I also believe that just we as, we as humans, we're better people if we continue to learn and absorb and understand and become more empathetic to other folks. Alright, so, um, Mr. Labanik, you have the next question. Uh, what is most important when representing students and families from diverse backgrounds? This is a two-part question. So the first part, what is the most, was most important when representing students' families from diverse backgrounds? And number two, how will you represent the needs of all students?
Good question, actually. Um, I think most important is 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 listening and understanding, like, you know, being available to hear what challenges they face. I mean, we have a huge district and from one side to the other, top to bottom, I mean, the demographics and everything are just completely you know, what what I face as a parent living here or our family as opposed to somebody at the other side of the district or even our neighbors across the street are going to be different. I think the only way to really know what they're facing is to be involved and around and ask and listen, genuinely listen to understand. You know, and and as a school board trustee, I think the more, or even as administrator in general, is the more you understand and listen and and also include the staff and the teachers, you know, and great, gain that as much understanding as you can. Then when you make decisions, you're making decisions generally with as many students and many families, um, in mind as you possibly can and how it's going to affect them.
Alright, Mr. Slur, uh, what is the most important thing when representing students and families from diverse backgrounds? And the second part is how do you represent the needs of all students?
Okay, uh, the first thing you have to do is understand culture. So anybody that's been in the workforce knows that the workforce is diverse as our school. And I can't remember the number of different languages that our students speak, but I was thinking it was around a hundred at one point in time, which was amazing. So with that comes culture, difference of culture. So if you've got an open mind and you're willing to listen, everybody's got their opinion. But if you open up your mind and hear their point of view from where they're coming from. You know, somebody that might come from, uh, another country that comes to ours, our our customs, our mannerisms, maybe totally foreign, they may have a student here. How do you adapt to that? And part of that is the training of our staff and our staff has done a fantastic job of understanding the different needs of the different kids. We talked about special needs kids earlier, you know, they are the same. But yet they're different. So how do we train our teachers to be able to cope with that and listen and learn and react? So uh, the more, most important thing is for us to be adaptable, adaptable and understandable.
Alright, thank you. Uh, Mr. Labanik, uh, do you have anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Yeah, um, I do. I think, I think part of, part of that is is also making sure that that our staff is is we're diverse as our, as our student body. And where if we need to, um, you know, promote and reach out and try to recruit in the same capacity, I think that is going to help make our students feel more at home, more comfortable as well.
Alright, thank you. Alright, um, oh man, I feel like this, alright, this one. Mr. Slur, you're next, but I'm asking this question first to you anyway, though, even though I feel like this will be a a softball for you, so I I apologize. Uh, what is NIST's best kept secret? As one who most people not know about Northwest Independent School District?
That's an easy one, huh, Joe? Okay.
Well, no, I and I I know no pressure on you or anything like that either, so. But that's the, it's a great answer because everyone, it's a great question because everyone will have a different, different response to it also, though, you know.
Now, the best kept secret, I think, are our our teachers. I mean, we have fantastic programs that a lot of people come to our district just to hit. But every time we do a a boundary change, we have parents that are begging us to stay at a campus. And you think, well, why would you want to go to a brand new school instead of a campus that we may consider overcrowded? And the answer is every time, it's your staff. Your staff is amazing. They care for my kid. They care for his well-being. They care for his education. So I'm going to say, you know, our facilities are fantastic, our programs are fantastic, but it's the teachers, our administrators, that make it what it is. You know, we can put out all kinds of different curriculums and and policies to follow. But if they're not adaptable to our kids or kids don't understand through our teachers, we've lost that message. And our teachers deliver that. And so that's why I'm so proud of them and the campuses they've generated because they have pride in their campus and the parents know that as well as the students.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mr. Labanik, uh, what is Northwest Independent School District's best kept secret? Uh, what do you, in your opinion, what do most people not know about that they ought to?
Um, I, boy, you told me I couldn't give the same answer, so I'm going to have to, no, I
Same answer.
No, it's, no, it's, I I I agree that I think the staff is fantastic. I also, I think the relationship between between families and the teachers. And I think that is is, I mean, you can have the best teacher in the world, but if she if she's not getting supported by families and parents, then it, then it's going to, the students are going to suffer. And I I do feel like our our district in general, the parents want to support the teachers and they want to support the staff and not just the, I mean, the whole schools, the principals. Um, and I think this, the the teachers feed off of that as well. And, um, and so then they want to do more because now they they they're invested in that student, but they're invested in their whole family. And they want to go, hey, I want, you know, I want that younger sibling too, because I know that family squared away. Teachers like, or this parent's like, hey, I want that teacher because I know she's good. And so I think it is that dynamic between the staff and the teachers and the parents and the families.
Excellent. Mr. Slur, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I'll follow up with one more thing, and that is the size of our district. You know, we've got fourteen different communities, three different counties, two hundred and thirty-four square miles. And when somebody moves into our district, especially that south corridor or over in the eastern part with the Eaton feeder system, uh, they may not know that fifteen miles back to the west is another campus, another middle school. And when they look at the enormity of our school district, uh, they realize some of the issues that we might have with the expanse that we have to fill out. We're only like twenty-seven percent built out. And when you look at all the hundred and four subdivisions in our district, you know, wow, there must be something here worth coming for.
Alright, excellent. Alright, um. Slubanic, the question for you next is, how do you intend to support students receiving special education services and supports, uh, to ensure equitable classrooms while public school funding challenges, uh, make doing so fiscally difficult?
Um, I I think we have to, that that falls under that must-have. There's nice to haves and then there's must-haves. I think making sure every student feels safe and included in in their learning in whatever parameter and whatever that looks like is a must-have. Um, we we can get creative in other areas. We cannot get creative there. I think those are, those are important. And then part of that is pulling those, again, pulling those teachers and those parents of those students in, and I was in, but like engaging with them and saying, okay, what are you seeing in your student? What are you seeing in your classrooms and what do you need and what can, how can we make that experience better? Um, I think making assumptions in those areas particularly is a bad thing. I think those were communication i- is key to really, really make sure that those must-haves are are addressed.
Alright, excellent. Mr. Slur, uh, I'll ask the question again just because it is fairly long. How do you intend to support students receiving special education services and supports that ensures equitable classrooms while public school funding challenges make doing so fiscally difficult?
Well, I guess the answer to that question is how do we continue to do that? And, uh, as we've already said, these programs are essential. Uh, I've sat in on a few arcs before where the counselor, the principal, the teacher will sit down with a parent and talk about where their child is and where they need to be and then help them to get there. Again, it's very supportive, one-on-one, and that interaction between the teacher, the parent and the student is so critical. Uh, so again, as I said, Dr. Warren has supported those types of programs since he's got here. In fact, he's emphasized them. Uh, we've asked for, for more counselors, more teachers that can support this particular function. So as a board member, what do we do? We continue to provide opportunities for administrators to support that, whether it's through additional training, whether it's through additional expenditures. And like I say, uh, we've been cutting fluff, uh, big time for the last year. So a lot of the fluff is gone. So again, we're going to have to go back and start cutting in some of the meat if we have to. And let's say, uh, we don't like doing that, but as Mr. Labanik said, is that we we have to get by, we have to support those programs that support our kids.
Uh, Mr. Labanik, uh, would you like to add anything else, sir?
No, I think we're good.
Alright, excellent. Alright, um. This one, uh, the next one is going to be for Mr. Slur first. Um, alright, so uh, at last night's school board meeting, uh, included a discussion about the possibility of changing mask policy to allow the option of mask-wearing when outdoors at district events. Uh, Dr. Warren's comment also included recess. Um, thirty percent of COVID, I looked, I just looked this up today, thirty percent of, uh, there's been a thirty percent increase in COVID pediatric cases in Dent County last week. Uh, the the week, two weeks ago to last week, from a hundred and fourteen to a hundred and forty-eight. Um, with thirty-three days left of school, um, well, first of all, we have thirty-three days left of school, but tie back to last week when the CDC said that there's a new variant that seems to be more contagious amongst youth and it's transmitting, one of the reasons it's transmitted through youth sports. Um, I looked it up, uh, on the CDC website in Texas, it's twenty-five percent of the Texas cases right now. Um, with with that happening and with the possibility of maybe, uh, changing a mask policy uh, towards the, this close to the end of the year with with, you know, just thirty-three days of school left and we've been fortunate enough to not have any campuses shut down because of protocols. Um, do you, what is your opinion on that, the possibility of 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 the the mask policy? Uh, if if there were, if 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 that was a decision that y'all made? Being what was discussed last night, which was allowing students to be outside, including recess, without a mask?
Okay, well, if you listen to the board meeting, that was basically an update on the policy that we will be voting on probably in the next meeting in April. Now, if you also listened to the board meeting, you probably heard me say, I would like for the masks to come off. Now, I made a provision with that, that the masks would come off, but the students would still have an opportunity to wear the mask, the teachers could wear the mask. And I want all the teachers that want to get vaccinated, to get vaccinated before we do that. So, you know, we've gone through a full year and, you know, we've had a lot of folks that that come to board meetings and say, you know, please let our kids take their masks off, you know, they're suffering from the mask. And then we have to look at the other side. Well, what about those parents that are worried about their child? And again, I think it goes back to a choice. How do you maintain a safe distance? Uh, one of my concerns was if you're going to let the kids play outside, I know it probably changed from when I played, but there was a lot of contact on the swing sets or wherever we were playing. So if we're going to look at that, the CDC guidelines, uh, and I've actually done some research on my own about how effective a surgical mask is. And we know that it does not help in the transmission of the virus. Now, as far as the droplets go, yeah, it keeps them restricted. And if it makes people feel good and they need to wear them, then they should have the right to wear them. My opinion is, if you don't want to wear them and it's a safe environment, everybody's been vaccinated, that can be, then we should be able to send our kids to school without masks on.
Alright, uh, Mr. Labanik, uh, you want me to repeat the whole, the whole mile?
No, we're good. Yeah, no, I I'm, um, I if we're addressing just outdoor activities, recess, that thing, I think the mask should be on. Um, I think the parents should have the ability to decide what is in best interest for their student's safety and 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 really in most parenting situations, I think the parent's decision should be first. Um, I understand that there are students that have immunos issues and there are other staff members that have immunos issues. And I I think there should be provisions made if if they don't. I mean, we're, we've been virtual learning for a year. If if the masks come off at school and they say, hey, I don't want that because of my student or my feelings or my concerns, then then we should also be able to accommodate theirs as well. I I, to me, as a parent, I think the mental health side of it, um, I mean, kids are supposed to see people smiling and laughing and playing. I think that is just huge for mental health, huge. And I think we're seeing a flip as a society to where now suicides and attempted suicides and all those things are just skyrocketing. Um, and I don't have the numbers, but I know for a fact that in Tarrant County particularly, they're through the roof. Um, and that's scary, um, and the long-term impacts there. So given the choice for me as a parent, I I I mean, I would, I would like to make that decision for my child and what they do or don't do. And I and I think we should be allowed to not wear.
Alright, Mr. Slur, anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'll just mention that one of the things Dr. Warren mentioned last night was we have eighteen current cases of COVID in the district. And and we expected a spike after spring break, uh, that didn't happen. So is it because we we had the masks on or is it because of precautions people are taking to wash their hands or use some antibacterial compound? I think all of those things that our staff or administrators have been doing since last year have benefited. And the last thing we're looking at is the masks. So, uh, again, uh, I think it should be free choice. I support our teachers, uh, if they don't feel safe to wear the masks. And I've heard from some students saying, we're going to wear the mask anyway because we want to make it to the end of the year. Again, that is their right.
Right. Next question for Mr. Labanik. Um, what steps will you take to ensure that accountability and transparency are attained and maintained across district decisions? To answer to make sure I I state this correctly, what steps will you take to ensure that accountability and transparency are attained and maintained across districts' decisions, making an effort to gain public trust?
Oh, that's a big one. Um, I think, I mean, I think everything comes back, you know, comes back to communication. And I think in it is, it is tough because I know there, like in school board meetings, there's legal things you have to do and there's policies and procedures and ways, um, that have to be conducted and and certainly some of it's from a safety standpoint and some of it's just orderly. Um, but I also think there there needs to be, and kind of goes back to like we talked about with PTA involvement, where there has to be opportunities to where you can have forums even like this to a degree, or something along that lines, where where parents, community members can have and ask questions with the response. Um, or obtain opinions and why, why are we making decisions? If, you know, in certain ways where, like I know a lot of times at school boards, you know, they have to sit and listen, um, and then the conversations are discussed later. Um, and that's, and that's great. I mean, that has its place. I just, I I would like to see more involvement. And if it is maybe running questions through PTA and then PTA representatives and those types of things, but it seems to me like there has been a disconnect. Um, as a parent, I've certainly felt that. That's, you know, why I decided to run. Now, I think
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Slur, what steps do you take to ensure that accountability and transparency are attained and maintained across district decisions making in, uh, decisions-making in an effort to gain public trust? There's a way I have to do the cadence of my voice, I realize, when I, when I say something that long. That was, that's what's holding me up, my cadence. So what steps will you take to ensure that accountability and transparency are attained and maintained across district decisions? across district decisions, making it an effort to gain public trust?
Uh, well, it's interesting because our board president about a month ago, she reached out to all the board members and said, uh, what are the ways that you think that we could be more open, more transparent? How do we get more engaged with the public? So we all gather together our information and that should be coming out very shortly and in some actual workforce actions. So one of the ideas that I brought up was, hey, let's try to have an open forum, uh, once, once a month, where a lot of like our bond talks, where we've had Zoom meetings where people could actually write in letters, write in comments, ask questions that we can respond to. Uh, Dr. Warren's Facebook lives, you know, they, they were a big deal after COVID hit last year and we started trying to organize that so we could deliver a message in a much larger public forum. So. Again, we have Twitter, we have Facebook, we have, uh, other methods that I can't think of right off the bat, trying to deliver the message that we as a board, uh, in our board meetings, we distribute our, our board notes, basically talking about what we discussed. We encourage people to, to come to our board meetings. Now, in our public comment part of our board meetings, uh, we usually have a lot of people that come up there and talk. Unfortunately, uh, we can't address their concerns because we don't have an agenda item to discuss that about. But we always recommend, Dr. Warren recommends them to a certain administrator to talk about whatever issues that they have. So we, we try to address those when people send in, uh, to our school email, you know. As a group, we send those back through Dr. Warren and his staff to respond, uh, for the board because we're not in session, we don't make those decisions. So accountability and transparency is critical, but we need people to listen to the message too. And if they have another method, they'd like for us to provide that message too. Um, we're welcome to hear that.
All right, uh, Mr. Labanik, anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think, um, I think that this part has to be both ways. Like, I mean, I think, I, I know as a parent, I don't want to be spoken to, um, but I also want to feel like I'm heard. And I think that's, that is the challenge and not just with NISD, it's with, with, I think, governing body. Is how do you have that two-way communication? I think regular meetings, I think like Mark had mentioned, I think something like that where you can have a forum type. I think that would be fantastic and I hope that happens.
All right. The next question now, I'm going to actually kind of double down on that. So, um, of this last question, so this one will be for, for, for Mr. Schluter then, uh, first. So if reelected, and you talked about like what the board would do, okay? Um, as far as like increasing transparency and, and gain public trust, if reelected, and the only difference for you, Mr. Labanik, will be if elected. Uh, so if reelected, what will you personally do to increase stakeholder involvement in the district as we grow? And, and the preface, or I guess the background to that elephant in the room is the likelihood of more bonds, of more support, continued support, uh, to achieve, you know, vision and goal.
Now, I'll, I'll first start with our committees and Joe, I appreciate you serving on our Long Race Planning Committee. Those are important and we as a board have made a conscious decision, I guess, before COVID to actually attend those and be interactive with those, meeting with those folks. So we definitely want to look at those committees and see if we can expand them. We have the bond committee, boundary committee, uh, we have a, a textbook committee, uh, where parents are included. So the more of those that we have and can develop, that will breed, okay, I know this person, I can talk to him now. I don't mind calling him or talking to him. So, uh, part of that is getting out in the community. So I'm a very social person. I like to go around and talk to everybody if I'm in a room. So if we have these committee meetings and they develop a person, in fact, there was a time when we had board meetings at different parts of the district, in elementary school, and we just didn't get a lot of attendance to those things. So we brought it because of our logistics and now we have to take the meetings. It's much more difficult to bring our camera and, and sound equipment out there to it. So again, those are ideas that we've used in the past, uh, we can revisit those, uh, at any time. But being able to get out and meet with people face-to-face in these public forums.
All right, thank you, Mr. Labanik. Uh, if elected, what will you do to personally increase stakeholder involvement in the school district to, to continue to gain support?
Um, I, I, I think I would, I would agree kind of on what Mark had said. I, I, the school board has to be involved. The school board represents, I mean, we're, we're voted in. So we are literally the, the decision, the, the community makes a decision that says, that's who I want representing me. So we have to be approachable, you know? I mean, we, I, I mean, I get people in church all the time and have no problems coming up and asking me a question or doing this, which is great, you know, and community events. And, and, you know, when you attend field days at elementary schools, when we get back to those next year, um, hopefully. Um, you know, and those types of things where that's, that's how I've lived my life as a dad. Um, certainly the last fifteen years, that's not going to change. You know, I still feel it's important to be involved and I think as a parent, I don't have a choice. My four kids expect me to be there, so I will always be involved in district events and I will always be able to interact. Now, obviously if there's questions and things like that that can't legally be answered for whatever they are, and I don't, I don't know all that yet, um, but you have to be able to be approachable. You have to be engaged and interactive with the community, the people and the parents and the staff that you're supposed to be representing.
All right, uh, Mr. Schluter, would you like to add anything else?
Yeah, I would like to say the hardest part to convey is what our legislature is trying to make us do. Like with House Bill three, uh, it was months, we were almost to the school year before anybody could even interpret what we were supposed to be doing and what our legislators actually are requiring us to do. So conveying that and our school finances, because they change with the legislature. So what I might have known last by any of them might have changed. So just conveying that, that difficult budget situation from our legislature is the hardest part a board member has.
All right, um. That's, will, will you actually use that to lead my next question? So, um, this one's more of an ad lib on me actually. So we talked about the bond earlier and the, you know, whether the bond passes or fails. And as we know, the bond is, uh, the INS, so it's for physical buildings and for school buses and computers. Um, but right now we have the legislative session going on and hopefully, uh, they'll make some updates to HB three that helps fast-growing school districts like Northwest ISD. Um, I think a lot of people question why Northwest ISD is considered a wealthy school district suddenly and all of a sudden people's tax dollars are going to Austin instead of staying here to help. Uh, and especially when we also, we have this mass budget cut that has occurred this year. Um. I will be very candid and state that my wife, she actually lost her position at her, her elementary school this year. Uh, she won't be teaching there next year, uh, but she's fortunate enough to have been rehired. Uh, will still be in the district next year though. Uh, these are the slow, the slow outcomes of what happens from the, the Vader and the loss of revenue. These things aren't just a light switch, that slow process that occurs. Um, and I know that no district employee will probably, uh, say what I will say, but I do know that parents are concerned that if budget cuts continue because of things as simple as cutting foreign language, uh, some of the foreign languages and some of the other programs, uh, that there's concern that, um, uh, the quality of education may contract slightly. Um, and the goal would be to, 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 to make sure that, that it's minimally impacted. Uh, being that we have, um, next year, we're going to have a much larger teacher to student, our student-to-teacher ratio also. And I don't believe that there's any study out there that says students perform better with more students in a classroom. You know, uh, more competition of, of, of the teacher's attention trying to, to educate them. Um, can, can you talk about if, um, what? I guess if. The, whether or not, let's just, let's, let's just do some, some worst-case scenario. The bond fails. And nothing significant comes out of HB three. Because we know regardless HB three, the budget stuff isn't going to change necessarily for next year anyway, twenty-one, twenty-two. There won't be a mass, you know, the, there won't be any sort of massive, uh, you know, unless, unless the state gifts magically gives the school district a, a ten, ten, fifteen million dollars. You know, the next year's budget will probably be set besides what's happening this year. Um, but so with that going to then the November election, the possibility of either another bond or a Vader, can you just talk about, um, to try, and, and, and I hate to kind of use a fear factor or scare tactics, but trying to get people to understand the slow process, but also why it's so important to be involved, to pay attention, to vote, to become educated on these issues? Can you just, can you talk about, um, the, the, the worst-case scenarios of? And for Schluter, you've been fortunate enough to be in this district for a long time. So I know you've seen the ups and downs and the growth through the last financial crisis and whatnot too. Um, but can you just talk about what some of your concerns are, uh, and then what you hope happens? So this is kind of a free-for-all type bit, but again, the worst-case scenario, because we know that no one wants to talk about that because any educator will, will absolutely make the best of the situation that they're given. If, if all said, a teacher has fifty students, they will make the best of that situation because they, their, their heart is in the healthy students. But we know that quality of education, uh, and limit of opportunities, uh, may occur. Um, if, uh, if, 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 if certain things don't occur, don't happen though, to, uh, to fund the success that is, is possible. So, Mr. Schluter, could you go on or could you go first? Sorry, I kind of went on my old thing, but, but I, but I feel, I feel, I feel, I did, to be honest, I feel like it's the biggest elephant in the room over the last couple of years that we've seen, you know? Um, and like I said, the, the things are slowly, slowly occur. You know, things, nothing's a light switch when it comes to budgeting for large organizations, you know, or governments. And that's what the district is. It's a, it's a sub-political division, you know, of, of the state of Texas.
So. Now, I alluded to that a little bit ago when we talked about the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, where we received twenty-two million dollars extra. And then, uh, we turned around in twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, which was last year, and we only got a million dollars. So it's like, okay, well, what, what do we do? And I, I've got to tell you, every board member stressed over this very same question because we went into this budget year in a deficit budget, which we don't like to do. You know, we have a fund balance that we maintain, just as TEA recommends, uh, for these type of things. So we went in, uh, with over a hundred million dollar fund balance. So we had to use that fund balance because we couldn't make up the difference. So we can't continue to do that. So one of the things that we feared was. Okay, one of our, our biggest budget is our teachers, our teacher's salary, our administrator's salary, our, uh, you know, groundskeeping and all of those type of things, electricity, you know? That's one of the fears is we were going to have to cut teachers. And so we had an incentive that we put out there for people wanting to retire or leave, go to the district that we put that out there for them, uh, to take. So through attrition, we didn't have to get rid of any of our teachers, much like your wife. We were able to, to put her in a different classroom. So to answer your question is, we have an advocacy group that contacts our legislators. We have a legislative, uh, agenda that we have looked at. Dr. Warren has put together and we've approved. And Dr. Warren, board members have been calling our legislators or senators and representatives, telling them the impact of House Bill three and the rectification that we're looking, uh, to get for relief. So we're not going to sit back and just wait for the legislature to make that happen to us. We're very proactive in trying to get them to understand our situation. And it's interesting, when I first got on the board, we weren't a property-rich school district. If the Four Lights Airport came in and we were a poor school district. And then all of a sudden, we became a rich school district and then Robin Hood came around and started taking that money and sending it to other districts. So, uh, that is our fear and that's one of the things, uh, that we look like with our CFO. We have a great financial staff that is going through every number and scrutinizing this. And we're actually behind our budget revenue projections for the time of year that we're at. So we're tracking to, to stay under our budget, well, under our budget, which is going to help us the next year when we actually start to receive the, uh, the nine million in twenty-one, twenty-two.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. Labanik. I will go on that whole diatribe again if you want me. But for your perspective, being a, a parent of, of, of multiple students also, you know, in the middle of our, you know, quiet, slow, but possible crisis right now, growth and while, you know, concerns while with things being cut, um, what, you know, for the worst-case scenario, so what are your concerns and how do you hope to, you know, looking forward to, to move past those?
Um, it, uh, yeah, no, as a parent, it's, it, it's always a concern. Um, I think what happens, and, and I grew up in a school district that the state, and this is in Ohio, actually took over um, because it was such a budget mess. And, and so everything was pay-to-play, like literally everything. And so I certainly wouldn't want that for my students. I think when I decided to run, my, my one daughter, the first thing she asked is like, hey, I, she's in the orchestra at Northwest. She's like, are we good? You know, like, I, I don't know, like, I just kind of, I don't know. Um, I think it's a concern. You know, I do think that the geography and the size of our district can be a benefit because we do have so many municipalities and we have so many counties that we touch into that where we need to continue and maybe even up the ante. I'm leveraging that to say, hey, listen, you know, if, if Fort Worth, you want those, you know, Pro to bring those businesses to Alliant area, uh, you know, as a parent who's moved, you know, around, all my kids are from here, but I've moved, um, if I'm going to raise a family, I'm going where I know the school district's solid. Um, and if it's kind of dicey, then, you know, maybe Alliant isn't where I want to go. Maybe I'm going to go to Frisco or McKinney or wherever else, where other business opportunities are, are growing. And so I think our municipalities need to be our partners. And then we also need to directly have blunt conversations, kind of what we've talked about before, where when we're accessible to the community, we can say, hey, listen, like, we're making phone calls and we're getting our PTA to make phone calls and we have our committees making phone calls. You know, we have what, a hundred and something thousand people that live within our district or probably even more. Um, we need to say, in order to save these programs like PALS and like Avid and all those things that are, are important and in our languages and in not to get it worse, hey, we need you guys calling as well. These are our state senators or these are our congresspeople. These are the ones that sit on committees. Um, I think that is huge. I think we have, you know, our size can be a challenge, um, but then also it can be an opportunity where we can leverage that to try to get those, the state to leave us alone so we can keep our money. And then when we do have to make tough decisions, we just have to say, listen, you know, we want to save these programs, but in order to do that, the money has to come from somewhere. You know, this is what we propose, um, these are our options and, and having direct conversations. I think recently, you know, with the bonds, that's kind of certainly done a bad challenge, but, um, I don't know if that was the case last year, you know? And I think we, we need to be willing to have those conversations and not talk to parents or talk at parents and community members, but to engage with them, talk to and, and listen from kind of thing.
Right, appreciate that. Mr. Schluter, anything else you'd like to add also?
Yeah, I will say that we, we have a tremendous part in our Northwest Education Foundation. So we have, as, as Kevin mentioned, we have a lot of good businesses that contribute money that we give grants to our teachers, uh, for their programs. You know, they have to apply for these grants and, you know, we get tens of thousands of dollars every year that we can distribute back out to encourage the teachers and provide resources back to the students that way.
Excellent, thank you. All right, our next question, Mr. Schluter. Where's my question? I had, okay, what is the number one way for parents and caregivers to get involved in their students' education?
Well, I will say the number one way to get involved in their education is to understand what they're doing. Is, you know, relate to their students, find out what they're doing, support them. Uh, we provide a lot of online access for the students to look at. Uh, we provide a lot of online access for the students to look at their, their programs, their assignments. And to keep up with those assignments. So the best way we can look at. To develop an advocate of our parents is to have them involved in their students' education. And in turn, that brings them into a group of very similar to the PTA. Bring them into the PTA, get them integrated in the school, let them understand the school's needs and help provide that. You know, we have a lot of volunteers that are just now being able to go back into our campuses. And for these students to be able to see role models, not only from their parents be there. But for other adults that care about their education. So again, it all starts with the parents, brings it back to the PTAs, and then that brings them into the campuses.
All right, thank you, Mr. Labanik. Uh, I'll just re- restate the question. What is the number one way for parents and caregivers to get involved in their students' education?
Um, I think, I, I think as a parent, yeah, um, I, it is, to me, it's, it's involvement with the teachers. That directly in our students and in those campuses. Um, I think the, our oldest ones, when they started kindergarten, I, I became a watchdog. I'm like, man, this is fantastic. I'm going to be able to spend the time with them. And then I realized I spent almost no time during the day with my own daughters. Because there are so many kids that wanted that and craved that attention and craved that need. And the teachers are saying, oh, man, this is perfect, somebody else can help. You know, maybe reach them or work with them and read to them. And so I think, to me, it was communicating as a parent, it's communicating with my students' teachers. You know, and, and I would like to see that cleaned up a little bit. I think that's a challenge, you know, I have four kids and. When you get into twenty something teachers, um, it is hard to keep track when you have remind and email and new moodle and Google. And everything else, um, and so things do fall through the crack. I, I would like to see the district kind of come up with maybe one or two. Camp district by, hey, this is how parents, teachers interact. Um, I don't know what that looks like, um, but I do know that would help parents be involved with their students, which in therein would then help. Teachers, uh, truthfully free up of some of their time where they may be able to help. More students that, that may not have that ability, where maybe their parents are, are in the military or traveling or, you know, where they don't, they can't be as involved. Um, I think that's the big thing. I mean, parents and teachers, that communication and, because that's going to grow from there. You're involved with your student, you're going to realize the needs of that school and then just organically.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Schluter, anything else you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I'm always involved in the Northwest Reads Program, so just being able to now zoom into a classroom. I was against a remark about my background, I was doing a career fair. For the elementary, one of the elementary school kids, and we were doing everything from kindergarten to the fifth grade. And one of the kids asked me, are you really on the moon, Mr. Schluter? And I'm like, well, no, but in my mind, I'd rather be on the moon sometimes. So, uh, it's always fun to interact with the kids.
Excellent. Uh, all right, so we have our last question now. So we've actually done more than fifteen, but this, this will be fifteen. Uh, technically on paper, even though I kind of added a couple other, uh, just ad libs, um. So where we live, you know, Northwest ISG, three counties, two hundred thirty four square miles. Uh, we are the tip of the spear, the economic engine, uh, the greater Alliance area. Um, you know, uh, like Mr. Slur, as you said, you live on the west side. As we know, things are moving up on two eighty seven, you know, um, for me, I'm in my second, uh, house out here in Justin, Texas. So kind of dead center up north of the, of the district, no easy way to get where I am either, either though, uh, so I can hit east or west to get out here. Um, but so with that being said, though, um, we know that, you know, this, this question kind of hits on the theme. We've been having all night, if you haven't figured it out by now, um, but beyond just, just advocacy in general. Um, can you talk about the importance? Well, actually, the, this last question, uh, that'll be Mr. Labanik, actually, you're the, the one that I'm going to be asking the question to. Can you speak to the importance of public education in society?
Yeah, I mean, as a parent, I think, you know, the teachers spend more time with my students, with my kids. On most days, or certainly I would probably say on. During school year than I do by far. And so what they're learning in there is going to have an impact forever. They're going to make connections with friends, who knows, they may make their, meet their high school sweetheart and forty eight years later, kind of thing, where you have that. And I think the education is important. Um, I think it's also important to make sure that it stays as education and not. We get into the politics realm or those types of things, because I don't, I don't feel like that's the school district's job. And school districts should be teaching and preparing students for life, life skills. And not only it's going to be college, where we talked about with academies, but more so working with trades and learning those things. Um, and, and, and being partners with parents. You know, as a dad, it is my job to be a husband and a father, first and foremost. It is my job to raise my children up, you know, to grow out in the world and, and make it a better place. And I think the teachers and the communities and the staff at the districts need, should be partners with the parents. And I, and I know some cases, you know, that those, that relationship falls through. But I think the district, school district's job is to, to help learn, teach, educate. And then be a partners with the parents to raise those students up to become young adults. And model citizens for the community where they can create, innovate and, and make a, a long and lifelong lasting, uh, impact.
All right, uh, Mr. Schluter, um, can you speak about the importance of public education in society?
Yes, I sure can. I, I will talk about the alliance area that you mentioned. A, a lot of firms are moving to the alliance area and it's growing like crazy. One of the things that they constantly ask us are programs. That will help train students to work in their workforce, whether it be in a technical standpoint, a business standpoint. So, uh, I'm an engineer, a civil engineer. So I've worked a lot with the STEM Academy and I typically ask Ms. Helmick and her staff. You have any interns that might be interested in civil engineering? And I will take those. In fact, I worked with one and all the way through college. Uh, he was my summer intern and when he finally graduated, he now works with me. So, uh, it's important that all of the partners that we have, and there's a lot of great businesses. You know, we talked about the, the medical academy over there at Byron Nelson. Is that a lot of those students actually get to practice with one of our partners and that's Texas Health. Get real world experience. And that's what we have emphasized over the years is, hey, it's, it's not just about book learning. It's important to read, write and be able to do arithmetic, but it's able to cope and collaborate. And solve problems that we not even know how to furnish, uh, education for today. But as we talked about earlier, is to be that full time learner, lifelong learner. So again, with our partners, we're able to provide all of those opportunities to stay and live in our community. With the opportunities that they have with our local businesses.
All right, thank you. So Labanik, anything else you'd like to add, sir?
Um, yeah, I think I just carry, carry that on a little bit more where I go. Part of that, that partnership, maybe, maybe we can create where, because of our budget issues, we've had to cut Avid, we've had to cut PALS. Or maybe we can partner with some of our, um, you know, bankers, financial people to, to teach kind of classes. Or offer, especially with Zoom where it is now, where we, maybe we can, we can create or help teach our students some of those life skills. Not just for college, but just literally life skills, um, or mentor programs. Or maybe if we can't fund it through the school, we can get resources from our huge community and, and. Um, and create those opportunities that way. That's the beautiful part of, I think, a district our size, we do have those abilities where. There is, I don't know how many, literally probably million businesses and people who would love to partner and be mentors and be things. And kind of take some of those where we may can't get into school, but we could do Zoom classes or things like that.
Excellent, thank you. All right, so that was the last question. Um, I will, uh, actually let, um, each of you make a closing, uh, remark. And then I'll, uh, tie a knot on it at the very end. So, um, Mr. Schluter, I will let you go first. You have two minutes, closing statement, sir.
Okay, first of all, I would like to thank, uh, the PTA for allowing us to meet in this form today. Hopefully, we've educated some of the folks that are out there. I want to thank them for giving me the opportunity to, for, to serve for the many terms that I've been allowed to serve. To be a part of this district, uh, from the time I first entered elementary school. Uh, till I can serve and not just my own kids, my own grandkids, but all of the kids are the district. And, you know, we represent not just an area, not just a region, but we represent each and every student in our district. Doesn't matter whether they're rich or poor, whatever their race are, we're here to provide opportunities for each and every one of them. So I just want to thank the district, the voters, uh, and the PTA for all that you've done. Uh, I did want to mention a little bit about, uh, some of our programs that we afford our kids, you know, Project Lead the Way. Uh, some of the opportunities they have. And in times past, we've brought in educators, folks within different industries. That have been able to come in and speak to these students about their trade. And they're a whole lot more educated coming out of high school, uh, than I was for sure. Uh, I was in a, a rocket judging contest at one point in time. I thought it was pretty smart being an engineer in there, uh, but there was engineers from, uh, Bell Helicopter there, uh, from Lockheed there. Uh, and I'm thinking, I'm pretty ignorant as far as that's concerned. So again, I thank everybody for being out there and giving me the opportunity to, to serve you and your students.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Labanik, two minutes, uh, to give your parting thoughts for everyone, please, and your.
Um, well, I, I want to thank you for, for moderating it and, and kind of putting it on for us and the PTA and everything. Um, you know, I, I think having conversations like this is fantastic, one way or the other, regardless of how May goes. Um, I think when we have conversations as a community, as parents and administrators and, and everybody wanting literally the best for. For all the students, that's not, never can be a bad thing. Um, you know, I, I think I'm not a politician, so all of this is. Um, didn't realize how much anxiety I actually have, um, prior to trying to do some of these forms and things. And especially, you know, with, with somebody like Mark that has so much experience. Um, but as a dad, you know, I, I know the importance of, and I think that. That's, that, that's the part that, that I appreciate. I appreciate the conversations I've had with so many people. Um, you know, and, and just being able to go, hey, let's talk, like, let's brainstorm, let's figure out some things. Okay, you don't agree with that, I don't agree, what, or hey, we're on the same page, what else? And so I think the more we communicate in general, past May first, May second, all the way through. And just continue to have these conversations, continue to get involved, continue to, to, to be. Whatever we can be for our students, um, it, you know, nobody loses in those situations. I mean, that's what we should be, we should always be looking to grow as individuals, grow our own families and then grow our district. So.
Excellent. Well, uh, on behalf of, uh, the Northwest ISD Council PKs, I want to thank both of you so much for, uh, for participating. I'm no Oprah or, um, any other, the other professional interviewers or, um, Barbara Walters, anything like that. So, uh, um, but I, I, I thank y'all very much, um, you know, for, 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 for wanting to, to, to do it. You know, for, for Mark, for your wine to still do it, uh, you know, Kevin, for, for you wanting to do it also. Um, because like for, for, for me and everyone else, and, and each one of our PTAs, um, you know, we're volunteers. Uh, we volunteer our, our, our time one way or another, uh, to help with our students. And as, as our conversation has had tonight, once you become involved and you recognize it's, it's more than just your child, it's these other kids too. Um, and how it affects the community also and the teachers. And then you're, you know, you're concerned for your, your kids' friends and just wanting a better community for everyone. And so, um, we know that, that this position, that a board of trustee, uh, is the, probably the most important. Um, unpaid, a publicly elected position in the state of Texas. Uh, and so I really do thank both y'all for participating, uh, with us. Um, uh, and like I said before, for those watching live, thank you very much. Uh, and afterwards, I will provide, the, the link will stay, will stay, uh, the video will stay on our YouTube channel. And I will upload this to our Facebook advocacy page, uh, and people can share how they want from there. I want to let our viewers know that early voting starts next Monday, April nineteenth through the twenty seventh. Uh, depending on where your county is, check your, for your early voting locations and election day, Saturday, May first. From seven AM to seven PM, and again, check your polling locations. Gentlemen, it's been a pleasure. Thank you very much. And no matter the outcome. I want either, whichever one doesn't, doesn't, is not on the, on the, on the, on top of the hill, please continue to stay involved. Because our, that's, that, that is what advocacy is, as you guys know, in this conversation we've had, continuing to help these kids and our community grow. Thank you very much. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Joe. Good luck, Kevin.